We'll do is we'll call.
Recording in progress.
We will call this to order and we're going to be talking this evening about the fire district polling information that we've received. And so with that, we'll call on Fire Chief Rich to introduce the topic and our consultants tonight. So Rich.
Mr. Mayor, this evening with us, we have J.L. Wilson from Nelson something, polling company, sorry about that. He'll be walking us through a presentation on the feedback they received from their polling efforts at the beginning of the year. We also have Steve Leonard, who is the chairman of the board of the McMinnville Rural District to my left here. And I believe there might be one or two of the other board members that are zooming in at some point tonight for the process. As you're aware, we've been working through this process since 2018 and then we went through the ESCI consulting services for two years. And this is the next step in the phase with the information and the questions that the participants from both the city and the rural district helped build the questionnaires to try and get a feel using the data from the ESCI polling. Our hope is this evening we'll let the council give good solid feedback for the council on the next steps in whether it's the political consulting world or education world or what we have to do to prepare for an election should we make the move at that point.
Thank you, Chief. And welcome. So we'll turn it over to Nelson Research to go through our PowerPoint, which is a part of our presentation, but it'll be on the screen also.
Good evening. Do you have the deck in front of you? Or I can proceed either way. I can work off the top line document and provide some color commentary, or I can, if someone is projecting the slide deck, I'm happy to work off that, too.
J.L., do you have the ability to share your screen?
Yeah, I can do that.
And use the slide deck.
That'd probably be the best.
Let's go with that route.
Sure. Do I have, oh, yep, I've got it. Okay. So I'm going to toggle back and forth a little bit between some documents just to give you relevant commentary at the right time. And so I am going to start right here. Okay, just some of the early recitals here. We feel that a random sample of residents in the McMinnville Fire District and the McMinnville Rural Fire Protection District, 381 likely voters. We conducted the survey research both through online panels and through live call, about 50/50. This will produce a margin of error of 5%. We fielded the survey April 1st through the 8th. The survey objectives, first of all, I want to commend the Fire Chief and the process that we went through. It was, in terms of a process to put together questions, it was one of the more rigorous, I think, getting down to the right questions and narrowing it down to a concise research product that really enabled us to successfully conduct interviews with respondents in a timely fashion and get you relevant information that will make decision making easier. I just wanted to go over before every survey, I go over the demographic profile because if, you know, survey research is really two things. It's asking the right questions and asking the right questions to the right people. And it has to be a representative sample of your community. And just to go over that right quick, it was a 54% female, 46% male. The three age demographics, 18 to 34, we were up around 9.4%. The 35 to 59, we were at 40%, 60-plus at 50%, which was a close approximation with the community. In terms of party affiliation, it was almost a third, a third, a third between Republican, Democrat, and independent, non-affiliated, with a slight, I believe, two-point lean toward Republican voters, and that is largely found in the outlying rural areas. And then the split between the city and the rural was basically an 85/15 split. So 85% of the respondents were within the jurisdiction of the McMinnville Fire Department and 15% in the Rural Fire Protection District, which was consistent with the demographics of the prospective service area. The survey objectives determine the level of satisfaction with the two respective fire districts, pinpoint the willingness of the city and rural residents to increase their property tax rate to $2 per thousand of assessed value from current levels, to identify messaging strengths and weaknesses, and persuading residents of a merger proposal, and discover which benefits of a $2 tax base residents want prioritized. And so that, those are the key pillars that we sought to achieve here. Just at the outlying, the introductory questions, and we ask a few introductory questions, not only to give us relevant information on how the agencies are perceived, but also get people sort of in the frame of taking a survey. This is interesting data and it's useful data right out of the gates because if there are perception problems with the agency, it's going to affect your numbers later on. If they don't trust the operation and performance of an agency or don't feel that that money is spent wisely, there will be a reluctance later on to support additional revenues for those agencies. So these early questions are important. With respect to the operations and performance of the local fire and ambulance services, 52% said excellent and 23% pretty good. And so the positive response category there was 75% in the city and almost identical numbers in the rural section. So both populations had high regard for their service providers. You do have some open-ended responses that I would encourage you to look at in your top line document. These are the reasons that people give for these responses. We did have an open-ended verbatim attachment to this question, and people generally have a very favorable view of their local fire department, both city and rural. Question number two, based on what you heard, read, or experienced, how would you rate the response times? Again, very high marks for response times for both city and rural. The city at close to 78% with a positive response and rural with just over 73%. How important is it for you to have highly trained and experienced fire and ambulance staff? As you would expect, almost universally important, almost 100%. Question four, do you believe you receive a good value for what you pay in property taxes for fire and ambulance services? Again, just remarkable similarities between the two service areas. Both the city residents and the residents in the rural fire protection district feel that they get good value for the tax dollars, for the services they get from those agencies. So I would look at these three response categories and say both entities, both agencies, held in very high regard by their local residents. Question five, I think was important to the rural district, and that was, you know, was there an awareness that the McMinnville Rural and the McMinnville City Fire basically are separate entities and that they operate separately? Generally, there was lack of awareness about this in the city. There was a little more awareness about this in the rural district, but in no case was there 50% awareness in either group. And so I think it's safe to say residents are largely unaware of the fact that these are two separate agencies. So we asked what we call the initial ballots. And the initial ballot you will find in question six, and this is really where the rubber hits the road. And you just ask the question straight up. Do you favor or oppose a merger of the two agencies at a combined rate of $2 per thousand? And so the question has to be asked a little differently to the city residents because they're coming from a different tax base than the rural residents. And so we split that out. The rural residents were asked a slightly different preamble than the city residents indicating the difference in the underlying current tax structure. And so you get to a question that informs the baseline that everything operates from. And that is you ask an unbiased question with nothing but the facts that asks, are they willing to go to $2 for a merged district? You do add a little detail about what that $2 will buy, but again, the goal here is to provide a very objective question and let people respond, and this is your baseline. So the support for moving to a $2 merger proposal within the city jurisdiction, support for that was about 66%. Support for that same proposal in the rural district was just under 52. And so you had a combined approval between city and rural in this of 64.3%. And of that 64.3%, about two-thirds, there was strong approval. And so the intensity of the strong support, as you'll notice on the top line document, was about four times the intensity of strong opposition. So I look at these numbers out of the gate at about 64%. You know, doing polling for a lot of tax measures, I certainly like to see these tax measures start off north of 60% to give yourself a strong opportunity to make that case to voters. In an election time, you can always count on a little erosion of support, and starting from a place above 60% is usually a fairly strong starting position. You are starting from a position here, all things being equal, at 64.3. So I do regard that as fairly strong starting position for a measure of this type. Question seven, and before we leave question six, again, in your open-ended document, I would encourage you to look at the verbatims that are attached to question six because it gives you insight as to why people may or may not support this proposal. But overall, 64.3% support with a lot of your respondents saying this is just necessary and the right thing to do moving forward. So question seven is the first question in a series that we call the If You Knew Series. And the If You Knew Series is really designed to isolate one piece of information. And with that one piece of information, do you support the merger at $2 or do you oppose the measure at $2? And what you do is with the response you get back, you measure it against the baseline of the 64.3% support that we just talked about. And if this piece of information increases your support above 64.3, then you know that it's a useful piece of information and a useful argument for you to make in support of the measure. Now, many cases, there will be a piece of information and lots of pieces of information that are supportive, and what your job is going to be is to then focus on those that are the most supportive of your argument, that do the greatest amount or provide for the greatest amount of upward movement for voters when they respond to the question. And you're going to see that here as we go through some of these responses in the If You Knew Series, starting in question seven. But question seven is really, question seven is really designed to get into people's minds, what is this really going to cost me? And I think every survey has to have this question in some way, shape, or form where you're just very honest with your respondents about what this is going to mean out of pocket for them. So that gives them an effective way to measure cost versus benefit. And so for this question, we settled on a property, assessed property value of $350,000, which would, for city respondents, yield a net annual increase of $175 per year, and rural respondents would net $365 per year increase in property tax assessments in order to realize this measure. And so what you see here is, you know, people really starting to process, okay, what are the benefits? And now what's this going to cost me? And do I still support this measure? And what you see here is that your support, even when you articulate the cost, still remains pretty strong. In the city, where the tax increase will essentially be about $175 on a $350,000 assessed value home, you still have almost 61% support. In the rural fire protection district, interestingly, your support stays the same at 52% even when you articulate a $365 a year annual cost. And then in the aggregate, when you combine the two, the support level is 59.5%. So keep in mind that we started at 64.3. We asked the cost question, and the support still comes in at 59.5. And there you get, you start to feel, you know, does, do we still maintain support even though the cost has been articulated? So on the If You Knew Series, we went through a handful of things that this $2 per thousand will buy. And what are the features and benefits of this proposal? And we asked those questions in questions, we just covered question seven, so we asked these in questions eight through 14. And I'm just going to go over them very briefly. But question eight, if you knew the fire district would allow the district to hire 18 new fire and medical first responders after two years, you get 72.4% support. If you knew the fire district proposal would reduce the amount of time on average by 90 seconds for fire and emergency medical personnel to arrive, you get 76.2% support. If you knew the proposal would ensure there is trained local emergency medical staff on every emergency call, you get 78% support. And as you see here on the bar chart, that is going to be your top performing argument, basically in question 10, which is 14.5 points above your baseline of 64.3. Other questions we asked, if you knew the fire district proposal would allow for construction to begin on two new rural substations within five years, that garnered 70% support. If you knew the proposal would allow for a new fire inspector position to help identify potential hazards and prevent fires before they start, that yielded a 72.5% support. And if you knew the proposal would allow your local fire agencies to replace an aging fleet with three new fire trucks that are better equipped, 75% support. And then finally, question 14, if you knew the proposal would provide a fully operational fire and medical response in half the time it currently takes, would you favor or oppose? And you have 78.8. My apologies, that question 14 is the top performer. That is what you see here on the top of the bar chart. Question 10, with trained local EMS staff on every call, is a net 13.7. So what you have here in front of you are all the various components of the package and what are the components that are most persuasive to your local voters? The most persuasive reasons or most persuasive features and why they would vote to support a $2 per thousand assessed value for this merger proposal? And so what you're going to want to focus on as you ultimately get into a persuasion campaign are probably these top three or four, because you have quantifiable data here that supports, these are the arguments that move people to support this proposal. But again, we isolate one piece of information, ask the question, and you see where it moves against the baseline. This number at the bottom, the 4.8, the net negative 4.8, that's just simply the results of question seven, when we asked, you know, how they would feel if it cost them $175 per year or $365 per year, and that moved five points back or 4.8 points back from the baseline. So here you get the range of arguments and kind of features of the measure that work really well. It's going to be your job and, you know, whoever you move forward with the campaign to really focus on those top issues because those are your most persuasive. We go in at the end on questions 15, 16, 17, and 18 on what we call an agree/disagree series. And the agree/disagree is meant to be a, is meant to elicit an emotional response. And what you're looking for is for correlation between your emotional response and the responses that you got in the previous section, the If You Knew. And you're looking to find that those responses are closely aligned. Because if they're closely aligned, then you know that you've got something that works. And so here are the, there are two questions here that we asked in the agree/disagree series, questions 15 and 17, that are meant to make sort of an emotional response. And these will be sort of what I would expect to be your high watermark for your voters. You know, how successful could you potentially be if you just, you made all the perfect arguments and voters were in the mood? You know, how successful could you be? Question 15 is a statement that reads like this, improved fire and emergency medical services are critical to our community. I'm voting yes to merge the McMinnville Fire Department and McMinnville Rural Fire Protection District at $2 per thousand to ensure we improve current level of services. That question 15, you've got basically 68.5% agreement with that. Notice we say, I'm voting yes. Question 17 is, this proposal will save lives in our community by adding 18 new fire and medical first responders and cutting emergency response times by a full 90 seconds. I would vote yes at $2 per thousand to ensure we have this level of protection for our community. And on this, you have 67.9% support. So this, your emotional response in favor of the proposal does net you a few points in addition on top of your 64.3 baseline support. Now we go to the negative. And this is really, this really is setting the stage for what is potentially your low watermark. And these are questions, and realize, you know, sometimes these proposals are not about the proposal. Sometimes you might have an excellent proposal from an agency that is held in high regard, and yet at the same time, a voter's personal economics are not good, or people feel uncertain about their economy and uncertain about their prospects and are not willing to vote to support something, not because the proposal isn't good, but they're uncertain about their own personal economics. And that's really what we're capturing here. We're in an era of high inflation, economic uncertainty, and so what we're trying to do is capture that sentiment against the proposal that we're making. And so those questions are in questions 16 and 18. And question 16 reads like this, this proposal may be a good idea, but it's simply too expensive. I would vote no at $2 per thousand. Well, you have 56.5% that disagree with that, which is a pretty good thing because that means 56.5% of your respondents get that piece of information and they disagree. It's not too expensive. And so I think that that is a good thing. It bodes well for this. It only subtracts about 7.8% off your baseline. And then question 18, in this uncertain economy, I would not be able to support an increase in my property taxes. I would oppose a fire district proposal that would increase my existing property tax rates. And you have 54.8% of your respondents that disagree with that statement. And so that's about a 9.5% subtraction from your baseline. So that puts your support, even in worst-case scenarios in this, at around 54.8%. And so we use these to elicit an emotional response that really factors in people's personal economics and try to understand whether people feel shaky enough about their own personal economics to say, I don't think I can support this. In the instance of this particular proposal, I would expect your floor of support to be somewhere around where, what we just talked about with question 18, and that is uncertain economy, people unsure about their finances, can't support it. That only peeled off about 9.5%. So that still left you with about 55% support. So after we go through the If You Knew Series and the Agree/Disagree Series, we conclude with something called the Informed Ballot. The Informed Ballot is in question 19. And the Informed Ballot basically says, okay, now that you've heard all these bells and whistles, all the features and benefits, and you've heard some of the emotional arguments either way in terms of, we need this for our community, or conversely, it's too expensive, how do you feel? Would you vote yes or no? The support for the measure is reduced by about four points. So you go from a 64.3% support to 60.1 after all those arguments come out in the wash. And that roughly correlates with, remember, the question seven that we asked, when we asked, you know, would you support this when you know the cost? That 60.1 is really very close in alignment with that 59.5% response that you got in question seven. So basically what you're saying here is people are realizing this is the cost, and it peels off a little bit of support, but at 60%, I would say you're still quite strong even after people are fully cognizant of the cost. So your informed ballot comes out at 60.1, yes, and 22.3% no. I still regard that as pretty strong numbers. We have one final question at the end, and this was about a $1.80 tax rate. And we talk about some of the things that would be included in the $1.80 and some of the things that would be let go in the $1.80. And I would say that the $1.80, after having gone through this process of really unpacking the $2 per thousand, the $1.80 just doesn't resonate. And so that may be an issue of where it was placed in the survey, or it just, it may be an issue that people weren't, what I personally suspect is that when people are informed, it requires a new levy after a certain amount of time, it does cut into the approval of that levy. So what you got here was basically 47.2% support for the $1.80 and 34% opposition for the $1.80. So, you know, my conclusion here would be the $2 rate is clearly the more compelling rate. You're going to go through the same level of persuasion and the same, you know, campaign effort to get approval for a $1.80 that you will for $2. The features and benefits of the $2 are just a lot more compelling and a lot more saleable. So that would be my advice coming from this. And the last thing I'm going to say is, when I read the cross tabs, and you have two sets of documents, you have the, you have the top line document, which just gives you the top line numbers, you also have a cross tab document, and that gets a little deeper, a little more granular into the numbers. And I will, I will leave you with this. The one thing that I look at in the cross tabs for a measure like this are where are your highest propensity voters? Your four of four voters is what we call them. That means they come to every election. Okay? And so where I look at your four of four to say, okay, can I expect that? And so where I look at your four-of-four to say, okay, can I expect that these numbers, the people that I know will show up for this particular election, do they really support the conclusions of this survey? Or do I feel that these surveys, the numbers might be a little too fluffy because your four-of-fours really take a dimmer view of this particular issue? Your four-of-fours all across the board are stronger than the general consensus numbers across the board. So what that tells you is, the people who will show up to vote for this measure, support the measure just a little more strongly, support the arguments just a little more strongly, and support it in light of the cost just a little more strongly. So I would really encourage you to look at that four-of-four line in your cross-tab document. You'll notice that that tracks a little more, a little more stronger than the general response in a positive way. And so, you know, after having analyzed this, I feel pretty good, you know, all things being equal, that this proposal is going to get pretty strong support at the ballot box, especially given the indicators that we see from the highest propensity voters you're four of four. So I'm going to, I'm going to conclude there, and I am happy to field any questions.
Well, thanks for the presentation. It is heartening to understand that in our community, both within the city limits and the rural, that there's, there's an acceptance of providing safety and that the perception's high, number one. But secondly, that there's a perception that they could be supporting even higher and better service. So thank you for that detailed information. Let's turn it over to the council. Any questions or comments?
Not for me. Thanks, Jael.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, go ahead.
Wait a second. Jael, when we, when you began, I think it was around question seven, you concluded a sixty-four percent support, and then most of the rest of the conversation was based on that baseline. When you look at the rural district separately, it was fifty-two percent support. And as you know, this is two separate elections. So I don't know as we can apply the expectations that you might have suggested to just the rural group. Can you elaborate on that? What do you think?
Well, my understanding, and I think we cleared this up early in the process, Steve, was that you do have two separate tranches of voters, that is true. And the tranche in the rural district is going to be a little more conservative and probably more reluctant on the, on the tax raising piece. My understanding, though, however, was, and I think we got this back from the city attorney, was that this election was really going to be an election of the newly-formed entity. And so if that is the case, that is largely going to be subsumed by the McMinnville residents. And as we tested it, that was about eighty-five percent McMinnville, fifteen percent rural. So I, I have no reason to believe that information is not true, and so that's why we tested it in that way. Your feedback and your characterization of your constituents is exactly right. And they will probably not be quite as supportive because they're probably a little more fiscally conscious, a little more uncertain about their personal economies, and quite simply, they're starting from a lower tax threshold, so they're paying proportionally a little more. And so that would stand to reason. But my, my understanding is the election is going to be of the newly-formed district as a whole.
I think I disagree. Is there?
No, that's accurate. Yeah. There would have to be two, you would have to vote to dissolve, but then the entire entity of the new district would vote as one, or formation.
Or formation. But you first have to get over that first obstacle of dissolving.
Well, that's at the same election, same time.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, then. Any other comments, chief, from you?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor. We are still working on some background documents and information to prepare to move forward. The rural district will be having a meeting, I believe, in June.
June 21st.
To make a decision to move forward or not. We'll keep you in the loop, and we'll be back with more information as we have it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that prepared. Go ahead, Adam.
Jael, thanks for the presentation. Just to loop back on Steve's question and point, I think he was more zoning in on his district's desire to dissolve so we can vote as one district going forward, and his worry that there might not be support for that, since he leveled that around fifty percent. What do you see as the biggest obstacle for us from an informational campaign to get out to that rural voter and make them understand the paths forward and the benefits of this new district?
Yes, it, remember, it goes back to the bar chart that I showed with the green bars going across and the, the intensity of the support around the reduced response times about the full complement of fire and medical staff on those calls. And those, those arguments can be made persuasively to the rural residents as well. And that's the same key to winning over McMinnville City voters is the same key to winning over the rural voters. And so I would really focus on those top three or four that we articulated there in that slide on the If You Knew Series, because those, those are your winners.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for the great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like the presentation has, has been assimilated by us. And like I say, I still am very positive. I know there's a heavy lift that still needs to come. But again, thanks for the presentation. And at this point, we will go ahead and adjourn our, our work session. It is six forty, and thank you.